Well, thank you. A pleasure to be with the board tonight. It's hard to believe, actually, that it's March and this is really the first time I've presented to the board and the public. So, I always enjoy having these opportunities to speak and because of that, I say those things, so I'd ask you to indulge me just a little bit. To provide you some background and really some vision on where we're going in HR, not just the data, tonight. And so you see, from hire to retire, because really we're focused on the entire employee experience, not just individual pieces of it. And we should look at our vision for HR. Facilitate recruitment to retirement, employee experience, focus on support, equity and success. Staff members of the Iowa City Community School District. So, we start with that very broad, overall. By the way, if you don't mind that I sit here at the table with you. I'm sorry, I should have asked whether or not I'm standing on formal. But it's easier to communicate this way. And so, we take that as our broad umbrella. It's not, yes, we are focused in on the diversity of our staff, but really, again, for some background, to set the stage for where we are in terms of teachers and just some things that affect not only our teachers of color, but also our teacher cadre in general, is things are not looking the brightest for the recruitment of teachers right now. The smallest staff in the school in the last 10 years. Admissions are actually, applications to teacher prep programs are down by 35 percent. We'll look at our data compared to this next stat about really, about 40 percent of teachers across the nation are leaving the profession in the first five years, which is not a good signal for the future. And in this last piece, about by next year, 60 percent of the workforce being millennials is important because it tells us, from what we know of millennials, that we have to change the way we approach the employee experience, that they're motivated by different factors. Simon Sinek, if anybody knows him, has a great piece on this. And really, what we have to look at to get to millennials and make them still connected to what we're doing. We've talked a lot about our retirement incentive and some of the dividends it's played. I'm not sure that's a successful strategy as we move forward in the long run, because we've talked to millennials and even some Gen Xers and Z'ers and Y'ers and whatever else, people that are early on in their careers, they're not really looking at their pensions. They want control of their dollars now, and so dangling things out in front of them for 30 years in the future isn't working. And one of the themes we'll see tonight is we're about to change our strategies around not only how we recruit, but also how we retain our employees. And I know tonight, we're kind of focused in specifically of our staff of color, but I think it's good for all of our employees. And so, as we look now at the profile of our Iowa City Community School District teacher, we have our data over the last four years broken down by the gender and race. This year, we're at 1,141 teachers, 75 percent female and 92 percent white. As you look at that far right column, you see our diversity by percentage, excuse me, our racial diversity by percentage going from over the last four years, from 2015 up to this year. And it's specific about race and just as a caveat, because there's lots of different types of diversity and we celebrate a lot of different types of diversity, but normally people think about race and ethnicity when they start that conversation, but I do want to say that we're not just focused in on that, but tonight, that's what the conversation is about. And I think my team has had some conversation already about what other types of diversity should we be looking at and should we be, you know, kind of making more public about the makeup of our staff, because we think there's some other ones that we should be pointing to, to talk about, just the great and different people that make up our teams here across Iowa City. So, you see that just a four-year trend overall. And now focusing on diversity, again, you see those percentages where we made incremental gains over the last four years from 5.7 percent up to 7.2 percent this year. You'll see the caveat that information's based on October 1 data for each school year. Whenever we're looking at data, it's important to have a consistent touch point and we use our picture day data at the beginning of October. So, all the data is pulled from those reports. It just gives us a consistent piece of information to go back from. There's the percentages, but we can also look at the number of our teachers of color. 57 in 2015, 16 up to 82 this year. So, we see that percentage gain, but also we see the number gains in terms of individuals in the organization. Now, looking at our data tells us part of the story, but I think it's also important that we look at the data from the region of the state. And there, we see some comparisons, not only to the state average, but also districts in the state of Iowa that have 7,500 students or more. We're outpacing those districts, both at the state level and districts of a similar size. That's not to say we're doing well enough. It's just good to have those benchmarks to know where we are, to be able to talk to our colleagues about what challenges they might be facing, or to see, hey, are we behind the curve? We're actually ahead of the curve, but we are a more diverse community than the rest of the state. But that shouldn't be something that says, hey, we're doing great enough. It just is more data for us to utilize and to look at. And we'll come back to it in terms of what it means for recruitment. So, there you can again see it. We don't have the data from the state for this year, but you can see where we are ranking and quartiles above the state and districts that are 7,500 students or above. Now, when we look at new teachers in Iowa, right, teachers that are what they were hiring each year, not new teachers in the sense of any certain timeframe, but as we look at who we're hiring, we can see that are trending in the right direction, because while our overall diversity of our teaching staff is 7.2, this year, 13.1 percent of our hires were teachers of color. And so, that's a good sign for us. It means that we are increasing the number of staff of color as we move forward. You can see that's been a trend for us over the last couple of years. There was a dip in 2016, 17, but that dip coincided with a dip at the state. You know, I don't know why, but we looked at that and it wasn't an anomaly to us here in Iowa City. There was a bit of a backslide across the state that year. Again, we just see it in a different form to show that over time. Now, I think this is an important slide and it's a way that we haven't really talked about our data here in the Iowa City Community School District. For those who have the paper, I'm not sure what slide it is, but...
Page six.
Page six, there you go. When we look at who we're actually hiring, that only tells us half the story. We also need to know more about our candidate pool. So, what we did was we worked with our applicant data to break down and figure out the exact number of applicants that we had, the number of those applicants that were white and the number of those applicants that were candidates of color. And then we did the same thing with who we hired. By that, we can look at the percentage of individuals that we're hiring from our pool. So, if you look at the top of 1819 in the far left, it says the number of candidates was 3,644 and the number of people we hired was 122, which that means our hire rate is 3.3. Well, as you look across there, for our white applicants, our hire rate was 3.3. For our diverse candidates, our hire rate was 4.9. From an HR perspective, again, that's a good thing, because you can also look one column over and see that the percentage of candidates in our pool that were of a diverse background were 8.9. And again, we hired at a rate of 13.1. So, those numbers outpacing the hiring of white individuals is a good sign for where we're going in terms of what we're doing, in terms of what our team's doing in hiring individuals. And we can see that's increased over the last several years as well. We've been above our average just hire rate, diverse staff compared to overall and compared to our white applicants. Now, before we go to support staff and I'll tee this up for later, while on paper, it looks like from a pool perspective that we're hiring at a rate that matches or exceeds our pool, that we are hiring above the average rate for the state and for other similar large districts in the state, again, that helps us identify the problem that we have when we look at diversity of our staff, is not one of we have the candidates here, we're just not hiring them. It's we have a supply problem. We don't have candidates locally enough to meet what we'd like to see for the diversity of our staff. And so, it speaks to an issue of we need to recruit differently. And that might seem obvious, but there are districts where they are participating in discriminatory hiring practices, or they're not hiring at the rate they should. So, this is a good sign for us internally, that we are aggressively trying to hire diverse staff members when we have the opportunity. We just need to put more diverse candidates in front of our hiring managers to help increase the diversity of our workforce. And so, it's important information for us to have. We can continue to look at it. I was talking to Phil beforehand and we've given you this answer a couple of times and other data requests that we're in the transition to an ERP system. Once we have that in place, it'll be much easier for us to pull this data. A huge thank you to Jane sitting over there, Jeremy sitting up here in our teams, because we spent countless hours extracting this data. We just don't have it anywhere, so it took a lot of time to manually put it together and to sift through all of this. Hopefully, moving forward, we'll be able to better track it, but it's important to have it to look back and to continue to build these trends. The next iteration of this, and my team's like, there's no way, Chase, we need to continue to dig down and not only do this at a district level, but at a building level. That's a tall task and we have to have some sort of system in place to be able to do that, but to really get down and look at it, we need to make it more granular than just across the district. This is a good start, but we do want to take that next step here at some point in the future and look at it by school. We also looked at the support staff side, so you can see same overall for gender and race of our support staff. 2018, 19, 937 support staff members, 70 percent female and 77 percent white. As you maybe review this data later or have an opportunity to look at it more closely, you'll see that since 2015, and this actually I think also came out in answer to a budget question, we've added almost 400 members on the support staff side. It's a little misleading. Some of those people were here before 2017, 2018, but we reclassified some of them in the way we were counting employees in our system. Individuals that worked less than five hours a day in the custodial group weren't actually in our count and there were some other positions. So, while yes, we have added some support staff, it's not as dramatic as that those are folks who were here, but for ACA purposes or other reasons, we started classifying them differently and so we added them in. But they are reflected and it's important to see and like our trend lines for our teaching staff, we can see the diversity of our staff growing over the last several years. Again, seeing it there in a line graph form, 22.9 percent. We talked a lot about our staff mirroring our community. The 2017 consistent status put the white population of Iowa City at right around 75 percent, rural bill at 74 percent, and North Liberty at 85 percent. And so, we see that 22 percent of our support staff being individuals of color. We are getting closer to having the employee base inside our organization match our community, which I think is a good thing. It's a good thing for our schools, for our students and for our community, but again, it's only on the support side, not for our teachers or administrators yet. So, this is a comparison like we talked about, just shown a different way for our support staff. The blue line representing every year, the percentage of our support staff employed and then on top of that, the percentage hired in support positions each year. So, in 2015, while 16 percent of our support staff were individuals of color, 23 percent of our new hires were up to this last year. We're at 22 percent of our support staff were employees of color, but 34 percent of our hires were individuals of color. Again, showing that we're making our conservative effort to continue to put diversity at the forefront of our hiring practices. As I showed you before, with our teaching staff, we look at our candidates and then who we hire and look at those hire rates. If you look at the one, two, three, the fourth column, the number column under our diverse staff members, you can see that our hire rate was 25 percent this last year, which was three percentage points above our hire rate overall. It was right on par the year before that, 17, 18, the hire rate being 18.9, our diversity hire rate being 19.1. And then, two years ago in 16, 17, the hire rate at 11 percent and our diversity hire rate about 13.4. Again, indications of us heading in the right direction when we talk about our hiring practices, but also another recognition of our folks want to make diversity a part of their staff and will move in that direction. It's just we have to continue to figure out ways to get more candidates in front of our individuals to bring them to the system. So, as we talked about that, really, we have to look at a long-range focus for our talent lifecycle, looking at three quadrants, recruit, hire and retain. And they're written that way because they feed each other. I won't read those points to you, but again, this goes back to our overall view of what we want to do. We have to focus on all three areas in order to make sure that we keep a premier workforce here in Iowa City. You know, we talked about a focus on recruitment and hiring, but it doesn't matter if you can't keep them here. And I think retention's overlooked a lot, but if we're not working on practices to retain our talent, those numbers will fall, although it's a good news story here in Iowa City that we'll get to in a little bit. But as you look at focus on all three of those areas, some of this you know, some you don't, but some of the public don't know this. And I showed these things, notice it's not a rough draft, that things in red are on there on purpose, so you can see where we were planning on going, but then with the budget, where we kind of put the brakes off of things. We originally put some plans in place to start our processes much earlier. We know the talent pool is deeper earlier in the recruitment and hiring cycle, and so we wanted to move things up as early as it would be in February with an early season hiring fair. We delayed it to March 30th and then we actually canceled it because we have a hiring freeze on and that just really takes people off when you bring them in and act like you're going to offer them a job and it's like we don't have jobs. That doesn't make friends. And then, we had an internal transfer event, because as I said, we really want to move to something that's about the employee experience. And we know with moving boundaries and those changes, we have some folks that have to find new homes for next year. Our traditional approach and approach a lot of places is administration has the right of assignment. So, we might ask them, hey, what's your preference or where do you live? And we'll try to match them up and then we just, you know, do it behind closed doors and say, you're now at school B, you were at school A. Well, that doesn't really let employees have a voice. So, our idea was to bring them in, let them know where the openings are, and then let them have conversations with the principals to see what is that better fit. And we are doing that event at the middle of April to hopefully make mutual matches for our employees that find themselves in an unfortunate position of no longer being able to teach at the school they were. It's a hard enough situation already. You should really try to find a place that you're happy about going at and the school wants you to come there as well. Again, trying to change that way, we engage our employees. We still have our mid-season hiring events on the calendar as well as a late-season one if needed. Jane was our traveling guru this spring and went to the three in-state hiring fairs, not our original plan, but given the hiring freeze, we didn't need to expend a lot of resources when we didn't think there was going to be anything for the buck and we started our Growing Your Own programming. As we look in the future, we really wanted to expand some things and I won't read these to you, with a focus on diversity, creating partnerships with HBCUs, HSIs and AA and APISI institutions. That's Asian-American, Native American, Pacific Islanders-serving institutions for those that aren't always familiar with the alphabet soup of the education world. And expanding our recruitment horizons with a goal of at least four of our recruitment trips being to those serving institutions, so we can again focus on the diversity of our staff. Stop sending people like, well, not like me, I'll just use myself. New educators don't want to talk to the 40-year-old HR director. They want to talk to people that they believe they have shared experiences with, and so we need to start sending those folks out to recruit for us, to share our message, to tell our story and to bring them back. And so, whether than using my time and spending money to send me to these places, we need to be sending principals, we need to be sending teachers, so they can share their message, so they talk to somebody, they can see a reflection of themselves in the people that are trying to recruit them in the school district. We think it's just a better way and approach. And again, as we look at the research on millennials and what they're looking for in terms of shared experience, we know that will run into more with people that we're trying to recruit to the school district.
So, in terms of recruitment strategy, can you talk about partnering with HRs and businesses too? Because I can tell from firsthand experience, many, many, many businesses in the core org actively trying to recruit talent and diversify the workforces and so, training spouses, that sort of thing. I mean, it could be, if there's some kind of sharing of who's coming into the pipeline and is there an opportunity for someone to the district? It's just an idea, I don't know if we've got those relationships.
So, yes, one of the boards that I joined when I got back was, oh, I'm going to butcher the name, the ICR.
Yeah.
They have their talent board.
Yeah.
And so, I'm a member of that and it's a collaboration about private and public sector, employers are looking. The strategy is to find people that have a connection to Iowa, but that have moved away, kind of like me.
Yeah.
And bring them back. And so, we are a part of that group and trying to be involved in how we attract people. And it is a lot about spouses and what role can the school district play, but then also for us to bring back employees as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, schools need to be a good partner in the community. And that doesn't just mean having the community provide us resources, we need to provide those out as well. And so, I think it's incumbent on us to do some of that. So, yes, and we've looked at some partnerships with the local, with the University of Iowa and some other colleges and universities as well to help us in some of these endeavors too. Again, Growing Your Own and we will come back to that. Then we also need to make enhancements to hiring practices and I won't waste time going through these, we can come back for another conversation, but again, just recognition that we are focused on this apart, but we're holding off some of these things until next year because of where we are with our hiring freeze. And then, again, we need to focus and look at retention. Nationally, the teacher retention rate is about 85 percent. We haven't done a good job of looking at our own data, but we did take some time this winter and look at that and I want to show that to you. And then go through some of these other pieces about why retention's important, how we think it can feed our recruitment efforts. But as we look at our retention, this is our overall retention for our teachers and administrators. We haven't been able to completely unpack the support staff retention because of our system, but you can see the purple or dark blue line represents our administrators. And what we did was we looked at data on October 1. So, that number above 2016, that represents the percentage of administrators that were employed on October 1 of 2015 and were still employed on October 1 of 2016. So, you just move that forward. And so, we've had a couple of good years lately. That 2015 to 16 year, I did the count, we lost 10 administrators that year from a combination of things. Ironically, I was in that group that year. Matthew Furlong retired, David Duty took super tenancy, I stepped away to Virginia, we had a couple of early administrators that retired. So, we just think it was an anomaly that we had that many year, that's why that number was so low. And when you have 60 or so administrators, it doesn't take very many to write that number down. And you can see our consistency of our teachers being in that 93 to 90, or 92 to 95, that's really good, right? National trend is 85 percent. We're retaining teachers on an annual basis at almost 95 percent. That's something we should be proud of. And I think that speaks to our community, what we offer in terms of experience and our schools, our association and their partnership, all of our partners that helped us do that. We can dig into this a little bit further, so we break our teacher retention data down a little bit more. The blue line, the royal blue line, that is our teachers of color. The red line is our white teachers. The green line at the top are male teachers and there's a blue one that kind of runs right through the middle. Those are our female teachers. I want to focus on the royal blue line that starts at 90 percent. Those are our teachers of color, as I said, and it started at 90 percent two years ago. For 2017, it was up to 94 and it looks like it disappears, but it's because it's the same as for our female teachers. It was at 94 percent again this last year. One of the things I like the most about this slide is it's outpacing retention for our white teachers. So, we retained our teachers of color at 94 percent this past year and our teachers of color at 94 percent this past year and our white teachers at 92 percent. Both highly above the national average, but also looking at we are retaining our teachers of color, which is the national research, that bucks the trend, because Ingersoll and others that do a lot of research in this area suggests that teachers of color are leaving the district at a higher rate than their white counterparts nationally. It's probably true, but here in Iowa City, we've seen that that has not been the case over the last two years. And again, I think that speaks to a lot of the good work that's being done in our community and at the building levels. Now, we talked about our beginning teachers. As I mentioned, that story's a little bit different and we're no exception here in Iowa City. Again, nationally, 59 percent of new teachers remain in the profession after the first five years. And there's a lot of data and we'll look at some bar charts here in a second, but that top line, that's our 2013 cohort. And why it says 2013 is because we looked at it in five-year segments. So, those folks would have been here for their fifth year in the fall of 2018. So, that's our most recent cohort. And we're following the national trend, unfortunately. Year one, we retained 93 percent of those teachers, but by year five, we had retained only 64 percent of those teachers. Those factors we talked about at the top, I think are all influences of it. Again, it's something we're seeing nationally, so we need to start building a different employee experience, especially for our teachers that are new to their profession. Now, we weren't able to extrapolate our data as much as I think they've done on the national level, so these were, and so I guess this is my kind of my caveat for this is, these are teachers that were new to our district, not necessarily new to the profession, but the national data is really about teachers that are new to the profession. So, brand-new teachers in their first five years. This is as close as we could get based on the information we have, but these are teachers in their first five years. And so, it's still kind of following that same trend. And we add in the cohorts from the three years preceding that, the green line at the top being our 2010 cohort and the red line being our 2013. You can see it's progressively gotten worse, which again, I think tracks with the trend data that we've seen as the shrinking of the applicant pool, the shrinking of the number of individuals going into preparation programs. These all make sense to me when I think of it through that lens. It doesn't mean I like it or agree with it, it's tracking with the national data. It's still alarming and concerning, but it's a national epidemic, not just an Iowa City epidemic. So, we look at a number of different retention strategies, some of the things we're doing there on the top, and then six that we have in the planning stages. Exit surveys, so when people do leave, we can collect better information on why they're leaving, so we can again enhance that experience. Growing our own program, employee recognition programs, expansion of our community partnerships, leadership programs, and then overall enhancing the employee experience. I keep saying that, but that's what we really need to talk about. I know our business is education, but we also know that the most influential factor on a child's education is their classroom teacher. That's our largest group of employees. And so, if we don't provide a good employee experience for them, how do we expect them to provide a good educational experience for their students? So, and this is something that is something that I think we really need to focus on.
Just that retention strategy answers back to the connection with larger community. Again, every business in our core org is trying to not just recruit, hire, but also retain. So, community engagement, ensuring that we're plugged in, that the district is plugged into what the larger community's doing, providing opportunities for team members to connect with that larger community. We hear that a lot as a big, big need so that families are isolated and they're not here. So, again, just ongoing, you know, the connection with ICR or whatever, chambers.
Sure.
It's our, making sure those connections are there.
And we continue to try to expand that work and I think that's honestly a really good role or a place where the Equity Committee can help us, because they represent so many different facets of our community. I think that that's somewhere that they can really be of benefit to us. And I know they have some other charges, but that's one where I'd like to utilize them as key communicators to help us out. Cersei and her team have provided some good partnership for us, as well as some other organizations in the community as we look at this, because I do, I believe that, you know, we talk about retention, it's a school-community effort.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have to do a lot of lifting in the school district, but we don't want our employees working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We want them to be personalized, we want them to be involved, but if you don't feel that connection outside the workplace, you're not going to want to stay here, right?
Exactly, it's a goal factor.
It is. And so, that's why I think the community can be such assistance to us. And right, I think we should celebrate, I say that, but at the same time, I want to celebrate our successes. Our community's clearly doing a great job. We're boasting retention rates in the mid-90s, which is awesome, but that doesn't mean we don't want to continue to strive to make that experience even better. But I also don't want to say, oh, the sky's falling, we're doing poorly, because that's not the case at all. So, I want to make sure we celebrate.
Can I make a quick point?
Sure.
From the business realm, I guess. I've mentioned it before and other things, it's because you had on the strategies there, the exit interview or the exit survey, and I know one of the things we put into work because at that point, it's too late.
Yeah.
So, we have stay interviews, right? But the important part to it is asking, you know, what's the one thing that keeps you here and what's the one thing that would change that would make you leave? And if you know that, you can then make sure that those things don't happen, right? Because finding out after the fact why somebody is leaving is not super helpful, right?
Right.
I would just throw that out there as another thing to throw in the works, if you're not already doing it.
No, 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 we're not, but I get really excited about this topic because I think it's really fun work as well as being important, but then I'm trying to go back and I guess I have a lot going on, but I like that approach, because the exit survey is an autopsy. And I also think that the traditional employee engagement survey about, hey, how are things going or how have they been, that is also a look backwards. And we've already had some experiences. I talked about engaging. I talked about engaging our employees and, and their experience and changing how we ask our employees questions. We ask our teachers at the beginning of January, you know, what their plans were for next year. We said, we, we need your help in figuring out where teachers are going to be next year. And we want to know what you want to do, you know? Do you want to stay where you are? If you want to look for a different experience in the building? Or by chance, is your path taking you away from the district? Not how things been going, but what do you want to see from your experience? Our response rate was ninety-five percent. On last year's engagement survey, the response rate was less than fifty percent. We have to change the way we're engaging our folks and we have to talk to them about what do they want to see in the experience, not what has gone right or gone wrong. So I'll just go, I'll just go all night long. I will, I will. And so we're doing more and more of that. And so we want to get, and it goes back to that real-time, what's going on, what's impacting you right now, rather than that one-and-done, once every three hundred and sixty-five days. It's, it's just not where engagement is and we need to kind of keep that in mind. And also if something goes wrong, we fix it then, um, ten months from now. So, some of our strategies, back to the diversity of our staff, our teachers, and really understanding where the teacher shortage is, a focus on growing our own program. I worked with Sarah Brock on this and if she shows you some of the national research, I think we should come back in April, this will be one of the strategies that they've found has been successful in districts that are looking to diversify their, their teaching staff, is looking to grow your own programming. So right now, we're in the development of three different programs, two to bring teachers into the school district, support employees to teachers and students to teachers. We're in talks right now with the University of Iowa to look at hopefully developing a cohort model for para-professionals and other support staff to get signed up, to earn a degree, a certificate in teaching and then come back and teach for us. There's a lot of details that's still to be worked out, but we are on the front end of that. The student-to-teacher pipeline, again, introducing students to the, to teaching as a profession while they're still at school. And kind of coaching them and mentoring them through college with the promise of a position when they come out on the other end. Teacher and staff to administrator, growing our administrators, and then career switchers. The research also shows that if you're really looking to diversify your teaching field, you have to look beyond the traditional path to teaching, that more and more diversity candidates are coming through alternative paths to licensure. And so we need to embrace this and we need to focus on it as an area where we can do this. So finding more ways to get career switchers interested in education into the teaching fields.
On the, going back to the student-to-teacher pathway. You know, guaranteed position for students to finish college program. And of course, you know, we're in a situation where we're trying to find money instead of spending. But is there any way we could partner with someone or with the university on scholarships and things like that? I mean, all, all the time in the paper, you see where communities are getting people to come in and buy houses or build houses.
Right.
In areas because they're offering tuition and, and things like that. Is that something?
That is the, the five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar question, as you'll see on the budget sheet later, is we have to figure out a way to do that because we know that financial constraint is one of the reasons many of these folks haven't been able to pursue teaching or maybe wouldn't do that. So we have to put that out there. But yes, Phil, we understand that that's, that's the big hurdle right now is, is how do we find some funding that we maybe wanted to pull from the general fund to help fund these programs? So we've had some community meetings. Cersei's been very helpful in organizing some, some groups together to start looking at some of those pieces. But I think that's what everybody's struggling with is the price tag and how you do this. I don't know very many, not, this isn't directed at Iowa, just very many universities or colleges that are looking to completely waive tuition for cohorts of, of potential students. And so we have to figure out ways to generate some of that funding. And I don't think any bad ideas are a bad idea. It's just we know that we're going to have to find some dollars to make these programs successful.
So have, I'm just curious, have you looked at some of the programs that's offered sort of in the high schools that attract students? I just remember Future Teachers of America and a long time ago, when I was in school, they did offer scholarships for people that were interested and made a commitment to go on to teaching as well as funds for school districts to sort of hire teachers aides of seniors in the classroom where teachers got that support and students earned money but also got to see the profession from the professional side. Just curious.
We're in the beginning stages of studies and so those are all unanswered questions that we still have to, to work through and sort out. I am familiar with some of those national programs and one, why we want to try to keep it in-house is because we just don't want to encourage the students to go into teaching. We want to encourage the students to come and teach in Iowa City.
Right.
And so we know that we're going to put some of our own skin in the game to make that happen. But we need to continue to do some research and continue to expand our partnerships to make these happen. But, I mean, I really believe, and this is again, what the research shows, that if we are going to move the needle on the diversity of our teaching staff in a meaningful way, growing our own has to be a strategy, especially in a place like Iowa where we know what the demographics are. If, if we're not getting to our own early, making sure they stay here, we're going to be behind the game. And these are long-term strategies, right? These aren't for next year. I mean, the first cohort of, of students, even if we got it up and going this spring still, we're still talking four years at the earliest before they're back to teach. So we're talking about sustainable, long-term practices to help us grow a pipeline, not something just for next year.
Right, agreed. And, but, you know, every time we have someone from U come in here, they talk about the benefits of grow your own and as far as retention and everything that is in your presentation. So it, it's got to, you know, it, it's got to start at some time and, and we've got to be in it for the long haul.
Well, and I think that, I, I agree. And I, and what gives me some optimism is that we've had a variety of different people independent of each other, reach out to us from the university, looking to partner with us on these programs. And the cynical person in me says, you know, one of the reasons they're reaching out is because they're realizing they're in the same spot we are. We just, we just knew it first.
Sure.
Right? We just knew it first. And now the universities are looking at their programs and there's no diversity in their teacher preparation programs, there's no diversity in their administrative preparation programs. And so it's, to Janet's point about partnering with others, it's a win-win to say, oh, how do we figure out a way that we can bring students to our programs and how do we get them back to our local school districts? And so, yeah, but I agree. And I, I do, I think that we've got a real shot at putting some of these things together and making that work. So along with that, we, we know that there's always room for leadership development. This is not the T L C grant. This is not necessarily a training ground to be a leader, but to provide individuals an opportunity to learn more about our programs and to be more vested in their work. Again, to enhance that experience of being an employee inside Iowa City. And so just some cohort models to, to teach and to get people to know the story of Iowa City and what it means to be a member of the Iowa City organization. So certified path, a support-side path, and then a, an aspiring administrative cohort, and then also a cohort to provide some support to our beginning administrators. We've seen the data on new teachers, but there's also some attrition in the administrator ranks and, you know, we, we don't know what we don't know. And administrators can use a group of other new administrators to always bounce ideas off of. And so again, looking at long-term ways to provide success. And as we look at the long-term solution, if there is kind of a sour note for the evening, it's right here. You see is a timeline for the next five years about implementation of these programs. Next year, planning and all the programs, which is why I don't have answers to some of the questions, we're still early on. Hopeful to implement the para or the support steps teacher pipeline in two thousand twenty-one, meaning we have a class, we've had a group attending college classes in that year. But everything after, after that is kind of up in the air. You know, we all had to tighten things up, the budget, and, you know, we, we did our part in H R, we are losing Jane's position, but as we plan this, that's a position that would lead all this work. And as we look at that, we don't have a body right now to oversee eight new programs. That's a lot. And not only those programs, but expanding the recruitment that would go along with that. I mentioned expanding our recruitment to be more national. We need somebody to do that. You know, our, our, our H R office is, is pretty small compared to the other, other school districts. And that's not a complaint, it's just knowing our limitations and understanding that we really have to prioritize our work when we do that. And so some of these things, if we forward them on without changing our team, we'd have to replace other things we're doing right now. And Jeremy and I are working on that. Now, this is our plan for the worst, hope for the best because we're not one to give up or go slow. And so while this is up there, we're still going to keep working on things because that's, that's just what we do, right? And then this is the cost we see associated, that's the wrong button, with it. We see our participants in the programs each year and those costs at the bottom. Again, that's a tuition share based on this year's college rates, all patent operating and understanding that we have to have some administrative oversight in there as well. So when all said and done, all of those paths are opening, we see the annual cost being about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now again, that includes the M T E, because it's a huge one. So, but, you know, we start it slowly and we begin next year moving forward on the para-to-teacher pipeline. And we go from there, one step at a time, looking at a long-term, sustainable solution. And moving forward there, you see it, where we continue to unpack our data, expand our recruitment efforts. And I didn't talk about this, but I think we need to continue to have conversations like this with the Equity Committee about the why and the purpose behind what we're doing. It falls on deaf ears if we just say, hey, you go out and recruit diverse staff members. Well, why? Why is that good for education? Why is that good for our buildings? Why is it good for our community? And we need to continue to have that conversation. And if we have that conversation, have that as our focus, these other pieces will, will fall into place. So we just hit on process, process, process. We need to continue to have the why conversation behind it. So I appreciate you indulging tonight and giving me some time. Happy to have answering the questions you, you have for me this evening.
So on the grow your own or grow our own, it's fifty-fifty cost share. And then what's the expectation on the backend? Time frame?
Well, I think that that's a question we need to finalize, but I've seen programs where it ranges anywhere from three to five years, two to five years. You know, schools, a program's going to be at least two years and you can give them back at least two years. I'm thinking probably three as a, as a starting point, but I'm open to that. You know, that's something that we can, we can talk about.
I had just had some loans. Iowa used to give out loans forgivable, right? So twenty percent a year. And then if you leave after three, you're still paying back some of that money. But if you stay for five and get past that, that retention time.
And, and we talked, and I think that's one of the things we need to continue to talk through, not only where is the funding, but if we are doing a cost sharing, what does that, that cash flow look like? And we started to have some preliminary conversations about that this week. We know, again, one of the challenges, especially for our support staff that want to become teachers, is that cash flow issue. And so we can't just say, well, you front it and then we will forgive it or pay it back when you come back and work for us. I, I don't think that's going to be successful for them or to have to share that cost for, for them upfront. But, you know, looking at strategic partners, do we go to the university and say, hey, you all front this and as these people come back, we will pay back their loans? I mean, I think there's a lot of different ways that we can do that and the time is ripe to have those conversations. We just need to get the right people on the table and start from there.
You know, some of those conversations, you know, I, I can see that go to like the Iowa Student Aid Commission and some of these statewide, like, you know, what's out there? Because, you know, I like the, and again, even on a fifty-fifty cost share, if they're half or forgivable, well, I mean.
Yeah.
Just make sure, I think, you know, folks have the skin in the game and help, you know, they got to have it, right? You got to have the funds, but the, the loans just have that, that incentive. And is there anything that, you know, as we do this in-house, you know, what kind of synergies are going to be even statewide for other folks? Because we're probably, you know, especially if we come up with a good plan, other people are probably going to be interested.
And I don't want to put you on the spot, Jane, but you might be able to talk to this a little bit better than I can, but Waterloo's been doing this for a, a long time with Northern Iowa. They, I think it's Northern Iowa, right? They have a, a rather successful pipeline program. And I don't know all the details on that, but we have some friends that can, that can help us unpack some of that.
Great. Just curious, do you have the numbers broken out when you talk about diverse staff, the categories that, that diverse staff fall in?
We, we started to break it out and, and we just need to refine it a little more. But the other thing is, definitely some of our numbers are, are so low that it can become identifiable.
Got it.
And I just haven't had a chance to refine it enough to say, okay, how can we show this where, is that a concern? But that was, we did look at that a little bit as well, was trying to break that down a little bit.
And I know you talked more about diversity in regards to race. Is it your hope that we look more, I mean, include race but expand self-reported disabilities or things like that?
Yes. It is, I think. And, you know, I, my hope is through the new V R P and some of the new software we're bringing on, that we can create dashboards that are live, where we can track this information in real-time on an ongoing basis. But yes, look at some of those other categories. One of the discussions that we had that we think is getting lost is national origin because when individuals come to the school district, they, they might not be from the United States, but they don't see themselves as fitting in to one of the race boxes that is on our sheet. And so they're checking point. But they're still adding diversity to our organization. And so we're not, we're not capturing that information in some of the questions. And so I think, yes, we, we see building that out because, you know, as our, as our mission or as non-discrimination says, we celebrate all types of diversity. And if we only focus on looking at one type, we're not living that, that mission. And so it's just difficult, challenging is the wrong, it's, it's data that we've never really captured before, I guess is the best way to say it. And so we just need to figure out some better ways to place it.
And, you know, we, we've had speakers here before that have talked about our district as a farm team that will hire people, but the advancement chain isn't fast enough and they'll go someplace else. It, it, and, and it's a characterization that may be true or it may not be, but what are, it, it is out there and has been, been verbalized here in our, in our boardroom at meetings concerning the challenges with diversifying our staff. What are we doing to make sure that the staff that we have sees advancement as a, as a reality and we don't lose potential, that potential of growing our own because they get started and they go someplace else because there's greater advancement?
Well, we, we brought Laura Catrell to the central office and created a new position Director of Diversity. And I think that's a strong signal that we believe diversity and equity doesn't live in one office, that it's something that we are all responsible for and about ensuring is across our district. They've started some programming, some social events to, again, get them engaged in the community as well. It's still a work in progress, Phil, in all honesty. And some of those strategies are things that we think will help that and to keep those individuals here. But like you said, whether it's, I don't know what phrase you use, whether it's fact or fiction or just kind of a rumor, I think what's true is perception is reality. And so even if it's not the reality, if that's the rumor that's out, that's, that's bad for us. Because when you look at the data, we're retaining our, our employees of color at, at a high rate. This last year even a higher rate than, than our, our white employees. So it would speak to the other side of that, but I agree with you that we don't, and I think Matt and Steve and everybody would agree, that we don't really have an internal true leadership development program where we can pull people in, put them through a, hey, this is I C C S D Leadership Boot Camp. You don't just sign up. We've picked you because we see a future for you in the district. And that's part of this plan is to develop some of those things so we can do that and understand that, hey, look, your shot at the principalship might not be tomorrow, but we do see it here. And, you know, we have to highlight that, by the way, while you're here, you're going to be paid as one of the best teachers in the state, you know? And I say that, and, and Brady's sitting behind you and we agree, that's a good thing, right? We shouldn't shy away from saying that. And I don't say that from any aspect of saying they're overpaid. I say, no, that's why we have great teachers, that's why we have them.
The community values it.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's why it's here. And I think that, too, when we are looking to recruit and to lobby, that we can't lose track of the fact that, you know, we're all here, we're all here in this room for a reason, because we've identified this is the best place to be. And there's a lot of good things going for the community, but one of the best recruitment tools or things is seeing a living example of someone who has navigated and gone through, and then can be useful for that as well. But I know you're here, I'm not saying anything you don't agree with.
Yeah. Good. Well, I'm happy to come back anytime and have these conversations. Obviously, I'm not shy about it. So I appreciate, and I appreciate the board's support. I know it's important to you, and I've had individual conversations with many of you, and so I do appreciate the support you've given my team and the understanding of how we move this forward. We're really not looking for, well, we like quick wins, but we're more invested in long-term, sustainable improvement changes for this district. So, thank you.
Great. We'll get the PowerPoint changed here. You should have the large format copy. So we would like to walk you through where we are at today. I get the reference one from February 26th, I'm going to pull up a one from March 12th, do this up a little bit. I'm just going to walk through the categories on here. I'll stop and ask a few questions as we go along. And some of us will look familiar to see some changes from our last time around. We've got some additional details in here. So first of all, on our district administrator reduction and restructuring process, in particular, we've got two positions that we're not going to fill, the Director Talent Leadership and the Junior High Dean of Students position out at North Central Junior High. We had a conversation about that one last time. Part of that involves moving all of the athletic director responsibilities into each of the three junior high schools. Matt and I have had a conversation with Colby about that. He understands that. He's actually going to take on, well, excuse me, at North Central Junior High. So he's going to be fulfilling your Activities Director role. We're also looking at restructuring our CFO position. We had a position titled Director of Business Services back in '12. We're going to look at reformatting that as we move through. We're also looking at some pay freezes. Myself and the members of the Executive Cabinet have met collectively, proposed freezing our pay rate. We're also in the middle of the meet and confer process with the rest of our administrative team. As we get a little bit further along, we anticipate we'll also see some more administrator pay freezes coming out of that. So we estimate that total budget reduction line item is now at $408,000. We saw our early retirement savings at 44 individuals out of the general fund. We have now been approached by some additional staff members who have indicated that as we walk through the budget process, that they, knowing what they know now, they would like to take advantage of the early retirement option. We are proposing opening up that window for another week following spring break, which would give those individuals the opportunity to participate. And again, you know, the negative of that is, we think at this point in time, we're at 2,000 cumulative years of work experience in the district, walking out the door. That's a little frightening in terms of the overall number there. At the same time, as we really strive for that goal of minimizing or eliminating any reductions in force, if there are people out there that are interested in taking advantage of that, we want to make sure that we do so. Phil?
To that point that you just talked about the loss of knowledge, do we track any kind of number as far as the average experience level of the staff that we have, like, from year to year?
In terms of active staff?
Right. Or, you know, with this, with what you just said, you know, we're losing all that institutional knowledge going out our doors. What are we at?
I don't know that. I know that I can see on my summary, the level of experience by band, so zero to 10, 10 to 20, 20 to 30 of the people that are leaving, and then HR can calculate, once they know who those people are, what their aggregate experiences. Phil was asking if we know what our experience base is in the district in terms of, I know we know for teachers, because we know for costing, but I don't know if we know for any other staff set, in terms of whether or not we could give an accurate breakdown of experience by employment category beyond our teacher.
You mean average, like a distribution? I was looking for a distribution.
Well, average would work, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it just takes, yeah, we, yes, we should be able to calculate it. It'll take some time, but I think we could.
Well, if it, you know, I think it'd just be helpful to know where we're, you know, with, you know, that's the double edge of the sword. You spend all the time and money encouraging people to get advanced degrees, hone their craft, stay here, retain them, and then we incentivize go out and, you know.
Well, beyond that.
I just know when Bruce Wilson retired from science and teaching chemistry at City High, I really felt there was huge loss. Because he was a second-generation instructor and award-winning, and just personal experience with him, I thought that, you know, it's very hard when you lose that. And it takes a while to build back to it. So.
About 50% of the teachers have 15 years of experience in the district, and they're called off-schedules.
Of what's remaining or what's leaving?
Overall, current rank. Current rank, 50 teachers are off-schedules, so 15 years of experience are, well, that's not a long.
Okay.
But then, you know, obviously, it wouldn't be a guarantee that people retiring are higher, but probably higher by.
The next line on here, you see resignation savings. So as we move into the latter half of the school year, we start to see more people whose plans for next year come into shape. We actually went out, reached out to all of our staff and asked if they had known plans for next year. We got an incredibly high response rate, which was fantastic. We did see a set of people on there that indicated that they are planning on alternate options for next year. Many of them have spouses that are moving, or significant others, and they're planning on following them. We have encouraged them, if they know that they are vacating their position next year, if they would submit their resignation earlier than they might otherwise. Many of them wait till the summer to do that, and we're trying to encourage them to do that sooner if they know their plans are definitive. We have four people in that category. I know that we've recently gotten two people that have just emailed Chase and I this week, so I know that number is going to go up. We anticipate as we move a little bit further along that it will go up. Our big issue is, we really need to know those numbers by the end of March, and they're going to have an impact on our staffing numbers. And so Brady and I talked about that at our last meeting. I know he's going to talk to the rep council about it. We talked to our administrators today. And we want to make sure that we are treating our employees appropriately, so this isn't a step-up type of thing. If you know that you're moving, you know that you're not going to be here next year, please let us know. One of the requests that we got today was a leave of absence. And again, that doesn't help us from a budget standpoint, but it helps us from a staffing standpoint, as we look at whether there's a vacancy that someone who otherwise might be irrefutable could fill. So we're hoping that we get a few more of those as we move through the next couple of weeks. And by the time we get to the 26th, we've got a few more in there. Our RAM numbers, you saw that earlier. We're looking at 21 right now. Again, I said discount the numbers you see at the kindergarten. And I focus on the 1-6 numbers right now. You can see the staffing summary there to the right, and our anticipated savings. At the secondary staff level, I think I shared this with you last time, this is still our greatest area of ambiguity right now. We're still going through staffing. And our big issue here is to try to reconcile those who are either resigning or retiring and their certifications with our needs for next year, based on student enrollment. And I think I shared with you last time, our biggest concern is we've got three family consumer science teachers who are retiring. We are unlikely to find three people certified in family consumer science that are currently on staff, that we would move into those roles. And so those might be positions that have to be hired from outside. That then creates a displacement in the reduction process. So we're still sorting that out. That'll come into a little bit more firm view here in the next couple of weeks, as our building principals get through that registration process and start doing some of those staffing numbers for us. I know you're intimately familiar with the next one, and that is our reduction in our library staffing process. Again, these are retirements. We have three retirements in there. I want to say thank you to our librarians who are still with us tonight, that we've been, we've had very open dialogue with them. They recognize that this is not a preferred option for any of us. And although this is not the reduction that they want to see, they've also provided us at least two creative suggestions for us to consider if we have to go through this process. We're not done with our brainstorming and conversation. And so there may be other options available to us as we move forward to make sure that we're best meeting the needs of the kids in each of those buildings. Special staffing, one of the things that I know many of you have gone through and dealt with this issue with your own kids, know that your students have art, music, PE, guidance and library as part of their specials rotation at the elementary level. So as we look at reducing sections at the elementary level across the board, a commitment reduction in the number of specials sections that are needed, we have to pull a little bit out of that number when we look at travel time that may be built in there. So there's a reduction factor built in there. We're anticipating potentially three FTE equivalent across all three of those areas. Title I, we've got a little bit more detail in here. I know this was a question that was asked last time. So not to read everything on the right side, but perhaps to draw your attention to the fourth bullet down. So we owe it for the 1920 school year. Alexander Hills, Kirkwood, Twain and Wood will certainly be school-wide Title I buildings. We have additional buildings that have filled out their school-wide application, and so they qualify for it. They may be designated, that hasn't been determined yet. And so school-wide buildings are the ones that have greater flexibility for us to use class size reduction dollars in those buildings, and to use those in place of some of the intervention teachers. I think one of the things that you saw in last month was we were looking at a potential reduction of eight teachers in the Title I area. You can see that we're down to 6.7 and 663,000. Part of that happens as you look north on this sheet, as we get things like additional resignations, potentially additional retirements. That allows us to look at these numbers that are on the south end of the sheet and do some additional reductions. The next one on there, hopefully, is one that looks really good to you. If you remember, we started out with a million dollars in reduction to dropout prevention. Right now, we're looking at $80,000 that's on this chart right here. That is a designation for IJAG. I want to draw your attention to that italicized text next to it. So there is a, in Chapter 11112, there is a, and that's kind of convoluted language there, but let me just explain to you that it has to deal with our carryover dollars. And because of the way the state statutory language is written, we've got to write down part of our carryover. And in order for us to comply with the law, we have, regardless of whether we had to do any budget reduction or not, we could have been in a position where the district's budget was growing, and we would still have to write down about $385,000 of our dropout prevention dollars. So the team is still working on where those funds come from and the programs that they impact. But again, that's irrespective of the issue that we're dealing with with budget reduction. I do know that one of the items that's in there is the Kirkwood Workplace Learning Connection. The reason that IJAG and the Workplace Learning Connection are in there is because I think conversations with the foundations, they see those two programs as both easily identifiable in the general public and good targets for fundraising. And so they're very optimistic and are willing to be very aggressive about working with us to reach out and look for sponsors for IJAG and Workplace Learning Connection, because we know they're playing. I think the important part to note here is that there were a bunch of things that were listed last time that you don't see here. You don't see student-family advocates. You don't see interventionists at the elementary or secondary level. You don't see success centers in there. So at this point in time, we have taken those off of the budget reduction process. So those are not part of that conversation that were taking place as we look at the budget reductions.
And so you're saying that this revenue stream, you're looking to get it through the foundation or someplace else?
Yes, the $80,000, and like I said, you don't see the $40,000 for the Workplace Learning Connection, because that's buried inside that 385. But again, we'll be looking to external support for that, and the foundation's already actively involved in that conversation. You know, as I said to them, how hard will it be to go out and seek someone through perhaps our Ed Innovation Group that would like to have their logo connected to every single kid who goes on a job shadow or an internship as part of the district experience? I think that's something that's easily brandable, and something that the foundation's really good at raising money for.
And to that point, any excess? It's not like we just have to meet that threshold, correct?
Right.
We can go, we can go over, and that just goes into the general, how would any excess be treated?
So usually what the foundation does is they go out and they target a specific, ask for specific programs, think School of the Wild, or Orchestra Iowa, or Visiting Author. And so they'll look to actually find an organization that's willing to sponsor that program for that cost. And they really look for a two- or three-year commitment for it, to try to make sure that it's sustainable. So it'll be targeted. If you find somebody that perhaps is interested in giving more money than we might find for the Workplace Learning Connection, we might steer them towards IJAG.
Okay. The foundation doesn't just transfer the money to us. They pay for the program directly out of.
Okay. So, but if they, to the point, if more is raised, then?
They can do more projects.
Yeah. We look for more opportunities for us to displace the foundation. So again, that zeros us out. You see the building supplies and the third-party holdover from last time. But probably the biggest changes in the scroll over here, the biggest changes that you see are the dropout prevention and the Title I. And you can see that that dropout prevention has been reduced from over a million to under 100,000. And Title I's gone from over 800 to 63 here. So we're moving in the right direction. And I'm hopeful that within the next two weeks, we're going to see at least a couple more retirements, at least a couple more resignations in there. We're going to continue then to target the numbers on the south end of your sheet here, to try to reduce those to, again, continue to zero us out at the bottom. What questions can I answer for?
So, my email on the Timberline billing.
Yes.
You know, which is a good return, right?
Yes.
We're getting a lot. Is that, so whatever they do, is that something we could absorb?
So Timberline billing, when I got to the district, we didn't do any Medicaid billing at all. And so one of the things that, it's a trade-off for us. We can either subcontract with Timberline to do the building, or we have to hire people internally to do it. If you look around the state, I'd like to try to get any feedback on this, too, but as you look around the state, almost every large district is subcontracting this process because it's incredibly regulatory, and is most often best done by specialists. Harder for us to hire those specialists, because we don't need them in aggregate. We only need them in part, and it cycles for us. And so it's most effective, I think, for us to contract that out. Craig, I'd ask you if you got it.
No, let's check on that.
Okay. And then, this might not be a popular question, but could we live for a year without three family consumer science teachers?
So, the short answer is yes, but let me elaborate. So we're required, for offer and teach, to offer family consumer science at the junior high level. We're not required, from an offer and teach standpoint, to offer it to every child for as much as we do. Okay? So one thing we could do, and this conversation has arisen as a potential solution, is we could move some junior high FCS teachers to high school, because we want to make sure that we're offering those courses to our high school students. We could still meet that obligation for our junior high kids as required under state statute, and we could balance it with the teachers. Now that'd create a hole in our junior high kids' schedule.
Study halls.
So what it'd do to the other study halls?
It would be study halls.
But the problem with junior highs, there's no other options.
Yeah, I know.
Electives are so limited.
Yeah.
Now, long-term, I can tell you that it's actually sparked some really good discussion about what are electives, and what our rotation looks like at the junior high, and what we could and couldn't offer for them. That's a great long-term discussion. It's a tough short-term discussion. So.
We had actually kind of started that conversation, a fall about just junior high like the program in general. And so, like Steve said, long-term wise, you know, we hope to put something around a program, a studies timeline, to show you something different. But in short-term, it doesn't help, it's all.
Yeah. Well, that's life skills, like what we talk about, and. Yeah. Well, that's, that's life skills like what we, we talk about, and it's crucial in this day and age especially, especially in this community as expensive as it is. So, essentially, we're losing every consumer science instructor at junior highs, or do some junior highs have more than one?
No, the high schools are where the retirements are.
Oh, okay.
So, we have our junior high teachers, our high school teachers.
So, your thought is?
That was a suggestion that was made, is could you transfer your junior high teachers up? The answer is yes, you could. And the problem is you still have to offer and teach some junior high options for FCS. And then, the real big question is, and what do you fill that gap? I mean, when we started that conversation in the fall, the team had lots of ideas for what you could fill the gap with. You can put some computational thinking in there. You could do some coding with them. You could expand our CTE offerings for kids and give them a wider array of choices when they go through that process, more like what we have at high school. So, that there's more elective options available for them. There's some things that we do at one junior high that we might not do at another, like that rock band class. Could we expand that across multiple classes? So, I think the conversation that the administrators had was really robust, and I think.
We have lots of good ideas, just the money.
Yeah, lots of good ideas. But, part of it is making sure that we get the right staff and the right seats to teach those classes. And at this particular time, the challenge with us is certification and staying within our goal. So, that's a long answer to a short question.
It's no, I, thank you.
I have two questions.
Yeah.
One small one. Small wise, I know it's not a lot of money, but what is the benefit? Or what do we get most out of being in the UEN?
Memberships are a good question. We actually had that collective conversation and everything from IASB, et cetera. So, probably the largest benefits we get out of that are a bigger voice in Des Moines as we go through legislation. From lobbying standpoint, from a professional standpoint, I know that job-like groups that bring together the professionals in food service and nursing and counseling, et cetera, provide a value add for the team. I know a couple of years ago, I actually sent out an email to the entire crew and said, tell me why or why not. And I know I got a huge list of responses from that. I can figure that out for you.
I mean, the reason I bring it up is I was, I'm a rep for the steering committee at the meeting at the IASB convention when we had our first meeting. It was interesting because the people that were around the table were kind of frustrated with the group. So, I think you'll see, you know, in April, they're coming back with some recommendations on.
Part of that discussion.
Yes, changing it. So, I mean, I would be interested to see what those changes are before we commit to the team.
How much is that?
It's, I think the annual dues are, they're less than 10, right?
Yeah, I think it's seven.
It's small, it's small.
Okay.
But, small things have a.
Seven, yeah.
It's like 8,500 bucks.
7,000?
Yeah.
It was 8,000.
Is it 8,000 this year?
8,500 or something like that.
Oh, it was seven, and they raised, they lowered it and then raised it so it looked more easy.
And then, obviously, the bigger one refers to the email I sent last week that you responded to as the delayed start of the ag program. That's obviously a discussion you need to have on the board, but there's no necessarily dollars attached to that, but that would be savings that we could apply towards staffing or.
How does that count then? I mean, we're assuming that's in the budget.
So, it actually, from that standpoint, if you think about, we scroll up here to secondary. So, we're looking at a secondary reduction of nine. That nine does not include the addition of the ag teacher, so that would be a displacement of someone on this list. So, if we are able to fill it internally, then that nine still comes from somewhere inside the district. If we can't fill it internally and we have to go externally to replace it, then that nine can become 10. That's kind of like when you look at our FCS positions. If indeed, we finish up with a need to hire three FCS people, we may be displacing math, a science, a social studies teacher in order to free up an FTE to hire somebody to do from outside. So, this presumes, the nine on the screen presumes that you take the number of teachers that we have this year and you reduce it by nine. So, if I can't find three people to teach FCS internally, and I have to hire three people, and I want to get to a net loss of nine, I might have 12 people that I have to go through a reduction for. So, if I have somebody internally that can teach the ag class, then nine still equals nine unless I wind up in a position where I have to backfill that person in order to meet subjects that are in there. So, eventually along the way, I have to get to a negative net of nine in order for the budget to form.
And then, you also mentioned.
The way it is here.
You also mentioned the addition of materials.
Yes.
What is that?
What was that?
I don't think we have a materials budget yet for it. I don't think we, do we?
For the ag program, we'd be able to utilize Perkins funds for ag materials.
So, wouldn't be general fund?
That wouldn't be general fund, no.
That's not a burden to what we're doing here. And one thing that, and I tried, I alluded to in the liaison, is that, you know, we don't have fiscal plan here. And in that grounds report, there's a lot of part-time summer staff and things that come in on that, assuming there's overtime. Assuming this winter, you know, we had a ton of overtime and so, things like that. But, I really feel we've got to take a real strong look at that and on things too related to and with the IPM, that we still use a known carcinogen and the risk, and the risk that we take by continuing that practice. And from a risk aversion standpoint, I think that, you know, we have to long-term look to get out of that because the suit where it was identified as a carcinogen had to deal with a school employee that was using during the course of his work. So, I think that there's opportunities there for savings with grounds. With our facilities master plan, you know, we've got a maintenance staff that used to be maintaining 100-year-old buildings. Well, with our facilities master plan, we've got a lot of new buildings. We should be getting some kind of benefit from all of this, millions of dollars we're putting into our facilities, as far as a saving on staff there as well. It's cheaper to maintain a new facility than it is an old one from a maintenance standpoint. And again, we recognize that this is a one to two budget cycle issue, hopefully. Not all the layoffs with Procter and Gamble have taken effect. Those are still coming, and we don't know how that's going to play out with our enrollment too. But, I think we've got to look at savings in fiscal plan. It's not here. We should be, we should be reaping something there. And I think that there's opportunities to be taken, taken with that. Especially on the ground. So, we use a formula process for staffing right now on a square footage from a cleaning basis. And I know one of the things, and Craig and I have talked about this in the past, actually, I think we talked about it the last time around when we did our budget reductions back in 13, 14, is that we can go through and designate different levels of cleaning, A, B, C, D, and we can run those through the formula, and then we can determine collectively as a group what our minimum threshold is. And you can see some pretty substantial savings from that. And I can speak our experience. We had to go through this when I was in Wisconsin, and I did the fifth year of the budget reduction. We were just simply running out of ideas. We eventually went from cleaning at a level A to cleaning at a level B to cleaning at a level C. And we can definitely put together some formulas to take a look at that, and then that generates labor savings. It'll generate, because you're cleaning less frequently, it's going to generate some material savings that go along with it. So, that's definitely something we can put together. Right. And that's part of our discussion with IPM, is that we've recognized that if we switch from chemical trimming with Roundup and Glycosate or dicamba to mechanical, okay, it's, in fact, you're going the opposite direction. Right. More labor-intensive. But, if we, if we're honest with the public going to say, "Look, we're a tight budget situation. I have not seen a report yet that gives an increase in educational efficiency or reading scores from six-inch grass to three-inch grass." We know it's a temporary thing. Will we, you know, is the community with us that we will stop putting these chemicals on our ground? Will accept a little bit of tallness or we'll get around to it. It may not be every week, but we'll get around to it because we recognize, we want to have, you know, our teaching, you know, the list of everything else. It can save us something else. And I don't think it's wrong too. And I've been in the junior highs, I haven't been in all the buildings, but I remember distinctly being in a junior high during the day and students throwing things, you know, papers, things. It's a mess. And our staff does a tremendous job because I was in the following day, and you would have never thought that what I saw during changing halls, changing classes during the day was the same building that I was in that morning because it was perfect. And that's a compliment to the people that we have. I don't think it's too much of an ask to ask our student population, our future citizens, you know, "Mom doesn't work here. Pick up the stuff to yourself, and let's all chip in and help to make this better for everyone." And that, and I guess.
Well, you know, Phil, that speaks to how many people have talked to us about the district-wide recycling program, composting, like, that's all going to be a part of that. Like, here's how you take care of your trash. I don't know that we're going to realize how we can impact that into the budget right now.
That's definitely something we can work on. Like I said, I've got experience putting those plans together. Craig and I talked about that at length. Was it back 13, 14, Craig? Does that sound right?
I don't know, about developing tier cleaning plans.
I actually, I mean, I actually think, I think we should look at that. I mean.
We have it already in place.
So, I think it would be really, but for me, if we're able, if you could come back and say by three inches to six inches, or from, you know, level eight to level six in terms of the.
We're already marginal.
I mean, and if we are able to agree that we're going to go after the savings, for me, the question is where do we apply them? And so, one of the things that struck me tonight, well, not just tonight, but through the emails that we've received, and thank you for those here who've been sending those, and other community members and building staff, teachers who've engaged personally throughout this process, and listening to the community commenters tonight, I think something that struck me that we haven't really clearly articulated is where, we've said we want to save people, but we haven't said we want to make sure that we're keeping the resources in hand to make sure students can believe by the very, or we haven't said that we're really engaged in terms of making sure undersubscribed student populations have the levels of support they need. Kind of early on, when we first saw the first cut out, there was a reaction of, oh my gosh, we're disproportionately affecting our high-stake school and high-stake students. And you've made some good progress addressing some of those questions, but we haven't articulated if we're able to find more savings, where do we, where do we save? Either staff, programs, librarians, and where do we decide we're going to have the big bang for that budget? Do you know what I mean?
I do. And actually, that, I'm hoping you see that reflected in here because I know that in previous iterations of this conversation while I've been standing here and you've been providing feedback, one of the things that I've always asked you, what are your hard stops? But then, I've also been listening for where are your pain points? And it was pretty clear that student family advocates, success centers, behavior interventionists, that those were really a concern that you had. So, when we went back and we were able to generate additional savings in the system, we really targeted that dropout prevention component. I understand librarians and Title I, I'm hearing that as a pain point, so.
And so, I just feel like we should spend a minute to articulate that.
Sure.
Because it's going to impound our decision-making.
I do think we started this with also talking about protecting our core program as much as we can. And so, I know those things, you know, like Title I, dropout prevention, even the librarian conversation of those, you know, the specials areas. I mean, none of them were fun, and we've been pretty transparent about all those cuts are bad. But, we did open the whole conversation with saying the foundational pieces to protect core instruction because we can't intervene our way out of problems. And so, if we cut or reduce what core instruction looks like, we're only compounding what we're having to intervene on the behalf of. And so, I do think that's a foundational thing. We can continue to come back to and say, this is what we're protecting as much as we can. And a little bit of that's difficult with what we've had to do with the RAM and the elementary model, or what we'll have to do secondary with some of those cuts and what could impact class size. But, to the largest extent possible, that's what I think we're protecting, is that core program.
I think another big learning that we get, yeah, go ahead.
Say one thing. I think JP put it best in what it's been playing in my head since we were up at the table. You said something to the fact, do we want students to have a hard year or a year where it impacts their future? And to me, that's where I'm at. Some of these cuts will have a significant impact on our kids' future because it's occurring so early on. And not to knock what we do in the junior highs or in the high school, but most of those kids aren't going to miss out on some of our new programming, whether it be ethnic studies, which I think we need, or ag program, or some of the new programs that they've never seen. They really don't know what they're missing. Teacher librarians, our kids have seen full-time teacher librarians. We have heard repeatedly in numerous emails we've received, how that impact will be immediate. The Title I program, I think our administration has done a great job of getting that number down, but it still will have a lasting impact on some of the most vulnerable kids. And for me, that's just not responsible. And for me, as a board member, I did not sign up to be irresponsible with our kids' future in such a young stage. So, I'm going, I would like to see that factored in. What happens if we don't replace some of those programs higher up or institute some of those programs higher up to save some of these programming in such the formidable years? Because if we lose them early, doesn't matter what we offer to them in junior high or high school, we did a disservice to them. So, I want to thank JP because honestly, that's been ringing in my head since you said it. Because, I mean, I knew it was there, but hearing it that way, that put it in perspective. I'm not willing to take a child off a path of a good future for, I'm sorry, family consumer science at high school or junior high. I'm just not willing to do it.
And that's really important to hear because one of the things that was a guiding principle for us as we went through this process was the learnings that we had from 13, 14 when we went through that. And one of the things that we knew from that was if you eliminate a program, it's hard to bring that program back. If you reduce something, you can build in a plan to bring it back. So, what you see on a lot of these are a tightening of the belt, if you will, in any given program. Library, dropout, Title I, elementary staffing, secondary staffing. What we didn't do was we didn't look at programs like German and say, that's an undersubscribed program. We're going to get rid of it because once gone, we know it's not going to come back. We can certainly go back and do that. And that would be what we would look at at the high school level, would be to look at things and say, because a lot of those programs are pipeline programs. And so, if you stop offering either the top end or the bottom end, eventually you're looking at German and saying, there's no demand for the class anymore. And that's definitely something we can go back and look at. We did not do that as part of this process. We simply looked at reducing our secondary staff and then putting the challenge to our secondary team to say, help schedule more efficiently, help staff more efficiently, help look more effectively at small class offerings that are out there, put an intent to preserve program.
And I just want to reiterate, not to knock what our secondary teachers are doing, but I think we have to focus in our elementary, I mean, we can't lose them before they even get started.
And that's really important for us from a timing standpoint because these are adjustments we need to make in the next two weeks for you. Because for us, our big issue is getting to the end of March and deciding who's still on the team and where we may have to issue pink slips to folks out there. So, if we look at the secondary level, it's far more likely that because of the certification challenges, we'll have significantly more reductions enforced as part of the process.
So, I know this isn't a long-term plan, and we've been vogue to do this, but are there things that we could go to the community and do some fundraising for, you know, for ag? For example, we've got Kenzie in the area, huge ag money in the area. So, I mean, are there things that we could put to the foundation and say, and it's not a long-term plan, we're not looking for long-term funding. We just are looking for, we need to get this off the ground. Could you help us out?
And we've talked to the foundation about that. The big challenge with it is raising money for one FTE is literally larger than any other single ask that they give. So.
I think speaking of experience on boards that grant, that's one of the last things you want to do is fund people.
Yes.
Because it's not sustainable. I mean, it's hard for people to take that job because they know it's a one-year thing.
Well, we do it all the time.
Well, we do it all the time when we do, we hire somebody on a grant. We get grants, and the grant drives up, but many times, that staff member is still here. And I know with the, you know, with the university, there's a lot of things on grants, and they got no problem when the grant, and, and my wife has a coworker that left to work on a grant project, and grant didn't get renewed, dried up, it was done, and that person is regretting leaving because they had a, they had a steady gig. That's something we, we need to watch. And I, I, I agree with the, you know, that we've got to address the problems that are not diminish, we're a K-12 educational institution. Every, every cut should be as far away from that charge as possible. And I want, I, I echo, you know, what Ruthina's saying, that, you know, the, laying a good foundation is very important, but also, we can't lose track of, even in tight budget times, of the needs of those that are here, you know, kids are in the classroom one time, at whatever level, first grade, second grade, junior high, high school. And I've got a guy who delivers parts to me at my business, and stroked up a conversation with me one day when he saw my sign for schoolwork. This was years ago. And he said, you know, I always wanted to do that home building program. And I said, yeah, that was a great program, one that was eliminated to save $60,000 and still hasn't come back. But, you know, my senior, you could only take it when you're a senior. He said, my senior year was the year they did away with it. And I often wonder how his life would be had he taken. I want, you know, I, I, I agree, we've got to be there, but we also have to make sure that we provide for all of our students. And we've made it a goal to improve CTE offerings and that, and we've got to, we've got to work on that. And all, and, and one other thing, I guess, there's a few things I, I didn't throw into the, the conversation yet, but, you know, we, we spend $14,000 a month out of the general fund for the Hy-Vee warehouse. You're shaking your head. No.
It's paid out of pedal.
It's paid out of pedal. You're absolutely right. Excuse me, I, I, you're correct. But that's, that's still one, it's still a drain on pedal, and, and it's an issue there. But we have, you know, we've, we've got opportunities, and I appreciate what you're doing on the, the admin side, and I don't think that, you know, shared sacrifice, and especially coming from the leadership at the top, is expressed as well. We talked about the, the schoolwork associate, the, the different accreditations. We spend, and, and that's another, it's not a huge one, but it's, it would be a small amount for a small ask on staff, is that teaching staff is required to pay for their licensure and, and that type of a thing. And I know it's, it's in the admin contracts and that, but it would, if admin would consider paying their own licensing.
We checked on that. The only licensure that the district pays for is actually some accreditation for our physical plant staff.
Well, but there's all kinds of associations and, 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 and those things.
Yep, that's different. Membership, there are membership fees that are paid for certified staff in the district, both administrators and teachers.
So, this is one of the questions I asked Les, and I did bring it up at the table before, but I noticed when I reviewed the invoices that we paid for, and I have it written down somewhere, but one of these cert, not cert, but one of these dues for one of our principals, and, and she wrote a note on it, this came out of my admin PD fund. And so I asked, you know, what do we pay our admin, or what do we pay, but what do we give them to use? And Les told me $1,000, and they can use it as, as they wish. And I know that in your contract, it's, it's more than that. And I'm not saying that it should or shouldn't be, although I will say that a number of years ago, our board president, Chris Lynch, provided numbers comparing to the rest, or the 10 biggest districts, and, and that was an area where our district is much, much, much higher than our colleagues around the state. So, you know, I, I'm just wondering, and, and I know that in my job before, when they've had to cut, PD has been cut. And it, it, they, we've been told, I'm sorry, you can't go to as many conferences. And it's not great, it's not a long-term solution, but it is something that I have seen happen. So I don't know if that's something that we would entertain. I know that's not something you guys want to do, but.
I mean, we can do it, but it's gonna put another $50,000 on the light. I mean, I think part of the challenge is.
I know, I know. We're talking pennies at this point.
We're talking five million dollars of cuts.
So I would, I would argue with you, it wouldn't, but, but if you're going to do it, you need to eliminate travel for everyone in the district. The saying that this group of employees can do it and this group of employees can't do it, you're pitting the groups of the board against each other.
Yeah, it seems to be admirable.
And while I understand that you're, you're looking at administrators, our administrators work hard. And if we want to, to Phil's point, if we want to grow our administrators and keep them in this district, we can't nickel and dime them because we think that they can, can shoulder that burden. I mean, they need to collaborate just like teachers do. And so, I don't think eliminating travel or attendance at PD is a good strategy, but if it's going to be entertained, it needs to be entertained across the board. And so there would be legitimate savings in that, I, 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 I think, I mean, more than $50,000.
Yeah, I mean, the only point I was gonna share, I think that I'm getting to, is we, my opinion is we're getting a little late in the idea generation part of this. Because when we come back, I mean, that's what we'll work on, and we'll bring you dollars to do that. But I mean, we are getting late on timelines and time to be able to put new ideas into action and go from, so.
How we can move those numbers around on this little sheet to, how can we move the numbers next year and the year after that? I, I say that because we're not gonna be able to eliminate cuts this year. We're not. There's gonna be cuts. And they're not great. And as we've heard from numerous emails and speakers up there, how do you know it's not gone for good? And that's a big concern for me. And so what I would like us to do, much like how we've talked about having our, we're having a retreat, right, to look at our facilities master plan and be very intentional of all these things we want to do are for these various reasons, and where are the importance of all these things and how we're gonna prioritize those, we should do the exact same thing with every one of these things that ends up being cut to say, these are the ones that are number one priority to get back.
Yeah.
And these are the next things. Because it's not gonna be one year and then poof, they're magic, right? It's going to take work to get them back. But I think if we're intentional about it at the beginning to say, you know what, if we have made all these cuts, whether it's this exact list or tweaked, I want to see this, this, and this number one, two, and three come back next year, and then a year after that, it's some other stuff. And I, I think instead of sitting here fighting this year of putting people against each other, we've got to decide what's going to help the kids the fastest getting back to a better reality. Because right now, this is not a great reality for our students and our staff, right? They're all going to feel it. And so I think we need to draw that roadmap to get back to a better place. Not just getting to a less bad place this year. Because that's what we, as, you know, Matt said, we have a limited amount of time to get to a less bad place this year. But if we forget about how the plan for the next two years to get us back on track, we are going to lose whatever we cut. And I can't, I won't say.
I just want a couple real questions. Craig, you said you already looked at the physical plant stuff, and you said it was.
We, we have.
And so what, is it a vault? A hundred thousand, ten? I mean, is there savings?
Zero.
So we're just, even if we let the grass grow six inches and set three?
Well.
And not have the same level.
If you, if you don't want to move into your buildings this summer, then don't hire any ground staff, temporary ground staff. That's what I'm just telling you. It's at what cost? And so, you know, we have to move Hoover, we have to move Mann and Lincoln, we have to move Tate, we have to move all of these buildings. And that's where we get our labor pool from. It's from our temporary help from the summer. And so, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know how we move buildings without people to move the buildings. Okay? So I'm, I'm not sure that's an area we should go to.
What about the custodial level?
The custodial levels have already been determined. We did a study a long time ago, and Director Hemingway asked me that when we first got here. It actually took place before I got here. And we scientifically mapped all of our buildings, all the square footage. We determined the square footage that a custodian could clean in a particular day. And all of that, and then we had five levels of what I would call cleanliness, okay? You have your grocery store level of cleanliness, and then you have your pigsty, and, and everything between us. We've, we've, we've targeted the middle. We really have, middle to low. All right? That's where we're at right now. You go any lower than that, your buildings won't be clean. You won't be able to provide your buildings with staff so that your community can use your buildings. There's a huge trade-off there. And we're already so short-staffed in that area.
Already gone from the hospital or the level to.
You, we have, we're, we have no luxury there whatsoever. And so, I say zero for a very good reason. And we have all the data to, to provide. If you want to read through those reports, they're all available.
Just wanted to know that, so that's one.
But to Director's, Director Hemingway's point with our crafts, we are working with newer facilities, but we're working with a lot more square footage. We've added hundreds of thousands of square feet, and we haven't added hundreds of thousands of labor hours to put towards that new square footage. Okay? And so, they're working just as hard as they always have. Because even new stuff breaks down. And even if you have warranty work on it, somebody has to track it down. Right? So, there, there's not any fluff in that particular area.
And I, I thank you.
Yep.
For that. And I will point out too, I want to thank, you know, you guys took about 250,000, you added 250,000 to the admin, and I think that was an ask that we, and that's big. And I know that was personal voluntary decisions.
But can I add to that? We just heard a beautiful presentation from Chase on one of our most strategic initiatives that the board has expected to justify, which is improvement and retention of teachers and administrators of color. And that one last chart, we're not to be able to advance any of them except for the, the top two because we don't have a position like one of those programs. And so, we're taking hits on our strategic initiatives, moving that line with some of the other, some of the cuts in here. And to your point, Sean, I put in agreement, when we do planning and prioritization, we should put direct plans when funds become available. Excuse me, these are the top five things that we have to start replenishing, right? Because they're so critical to our student success and our teacher success, which leads to student success. We need to be super intentional about that. Otherwise, we will forget.
And again, you know, we really did try to set up the reduction this year so that as funds become available, we think there's a really visible pathway to replace the positions that are on here. Whether it's moving schools down a tier in the RAM model, again, a very visible opportunity to use the formula to help our needy schools, whether it's our library staffing formula, whether it's our Title I process, where we're shipping dollars back from class size reduction into reading intervention. We think that those are, are areas that give us opportunity to replace those dollars in the budget and replace those services to kids, where last time around, when we said we're gonna stop doing X, Y, and Z, to restart it was really problematic. Tackle football at the seventh grade level was something that we cut. It saved us $14,000. Once we stopped it, the kids went somewhere else. We went to restart it. It's been a process. So, you know, German, we haven't replaced German. We've got Chinese now, but it's not at the scale that German was. And so, we were really trying to be deliberate in this process to say, A, we want to use attrition, and B, we want to use a model that scales down so that it can scale up.
Well, I think like Ruthina's point's an excellent with that. So if like the Title I piece is, you know, the huge priority, you know, depending on what that cut ends up looking like or where you direct us to go, if that's the number one priority to get back, well then, with what Sean was saying, then that's what we would add back first. You know, and what would be those other things that would come back and, and what order? Because that'll be difficult for us too to know, well, now there's some dollars back, where would they go?
And, and we, and we've done that. There's been some conversation out there that after the budget concern back in 2014, that we didn't add things back. And did you send that out, my response? And so we sent that response out today, that, you know, we, we have. Now, I can't go into, on record, exactly what positions were frozen, but since that budget time in 2014, we've added over 300 support positions, we've added 150 classroom teacher positions, and we've added 10 administrators. And so while we might not have come back and said, hey, by the way, we know we froze that position, now we're rebuilding it, which is probably a, a good communication strategy to move forward, we know that we surpassed where we were. And so I think that while it might not be clear to some people, they have been temporary freezes in the past, and we do kind of say it this way again, and the last three years would show that we've done that. And we just need to be more communicative, communicative on the backside when we, when we do some of those things.
So, excuse me, Sean, I do have a very specific question. So you had academic support listed under dropout prevention. So, and this might not be the same position, but a few years ago, we added academic support positions to all of the non-title buildings. And is that what, how that was funded?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm concerned then about maintaining that service in a non-title building and removing a Title I teacher from a not full title, but partial title. I mean, I feel like we need to look at these, you know, these designations by ESSA, and we need to say, okay, so maybe the academic support under dropout prevention should stay, and the Title I should not.
So where we're at right now with that is actually, Amy's not here to speak to it, and I know Matt and I have sat in on a couple of those meetings, but they looked at, scroll down here, so now, right, you see none of that dropout prevention anymore, all those little bullets that were in there, which included those positions. And they're looking at how do those services dovetail together? And as they look at which schools wind up being Title Wide and School One, uh, School Wide and Title One, and which ones aren't, then how will they balance the services for the students in those buildings based on need, given that they've got two income flows, and Title I is a little bit more constrained in terms of who can go where, and the dropout prevention dollars are a little more flexible than that? And so how will they meet the needs of students with a different mix of the Title I and that, that academic support position? So that's part of their strategy for managing this. And, and, you know, in a lot of states, one of the reasons why they ping me and Matt and send those meetings every day to find out whether or not I'm able to drill this Title I dollar number down any further, because that impacts how they decide to allocate those academic support positions.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're doing, Lori, is trying to look at that whole picture of where Title I support will be, where we can come back with academic support teachers and try to put that puzzle together with the figures we're working on the cut, you know?
Okay. Because I, I can just say, having my kids attended a Title I building, not the full destination, but partial, they cannot do without Title I support. I mean, God bless them, the great, but there are so many kids that desperately need that help. And, and what Ruthina was saying, you know, for me, and, you know, if, if we're possible, I would say the Title I is a hard stop, can't cut that. And I hear what you're saying, that, that it's too late to maybe.
No, I wasn't saying it's too late. I think new ideas are gonna be difficult. Like, if you tell us to shift something to secondary, that's fine. Well, we can do that, or we can increase some of these costs elsewhere. I just think if we're exploring whole new ideas to go and start to talk to our folks about, that's different. I mean, shifting some of these priorities around, that's what we need to know. You know, I think the implication secondary-wise will be, you know, you just have people come and you say, well, why aren't you offering this class? Or why is my class this big? Those will be the things that are done in return. It's not that we can't do those things at this point. I just meant exploring new things would be really difficult.
Well, I mean, 663,000 is a lot of money to try and move around, and I recognize.
But I will be cautiously optimistic that we're gonna have some retirements and some resignations that are coming in the next couple of weeks, and that's gonna help us drill that number down a little bit.
And so is that, that's a priority I'm hearing though.
Yes, yep.
I mean, that fits with our strategic plan, number one right there is our goal. It's very measurable.
It also allows us, as we work with our secondary teachers, when we look at registration numbers, if, if that number's getting low, and there's an opportunity for us to zero it out by maybe looking at one or two more FTE at the secondary level, that's a conversation we can have collectively with them and see whether that, that's something that we can actually make.
So if that's a no, then Steve, we're looking at what, about 18 instead of nine? It's probably double what it is now?
Probably, hold that, let's scroll on here and look. So, secondary is about 500,000 to nine.
I'm, I'm not saying that's the solution. I, I don't know what the solution is, honestly. I mean, it's, it's, it's not, I mean, there aren't any good answers here. And I'm not saying that that is the answer. I'm just telling you that that's really hard. But I'm encouraged to hear that the academic support would be moved. Because I was thinking when that was taken out of drop-off prevention, that that was all going to stay exactly where it is. And if that can move, then that helps.
I think we need some redeployment of the Title I teachers. So, remember, we were talking, there's 24 Title I teachers. We were looking at losing eight, now we're down six. I'm hoping we're well below that. And so, hopefully that has less impact overall on the program just required as we can. Steve, you said you're in meet and confer with principals right now?
Yeah, we do meet and confer with everybody who's not in the collective bargaining process.
So, does this, could this number go up a little?
It could.
The top add-in number?
It could.
Through the meet and confers?
Oh, yeah, oops. It could.
So, I just want to make sure you understand, so it, because the spot that's going to go is probably secondary FTE, right? And so, I think the trade-off you're going to have is you're going to, we will, staff will fix it. We'll do that, that's what we'll do. But you will not be offering the same program at the secondary next year you're offering this year.
And then what would the criteria be for what program does not offer enrollment?
Well, so, class size and core will go up. I mean, from what you saw in enrollment report. And then electives will have to probably move to some every other year offerings or not offer some things that we traditionally offered to kids. And so, I just don't want you, you're probably never caught off guard, you know, with those things. But I mean, that's who will contact you. You'll have special area teachers at the secondary that'll be contacting you, talking about their programs. Parents saying their kids won't have that opportunity next year and some of those things. So, that'll just be the next wave of what comes. But this is important for us to know, because if that's the priority, then that's the move we'll make. But by the next time we see you, Chase and I will be getting ready to share some staffing information back with the principals, so we'll want to be confident.
And if that happens, right, that more than likely results in some rifts at the secondary.
Right.
We'll be talking about one-offs of individuals that don't have another certification where we could slide them somewhere else. The Title I teachers, the elementary, are certified in classroom, elementary classrooms. So, we can ship them to another position, and we keep all of our staff. But when we look at making those cuts at the secondary level where people are more specialized in an area, we don't have as much flexibility of sitting into another position. So, then we have to, unfortunately.
Hey, that's part of our calculus on here, because if you look at this, we know that we've got 31 elementary retirements. So, if we're looking at trying to evaporate 21 positions through the RAM model, and at that point in time, eight through Title I, now six at Title I, we know that if the plan on the retirement is to replace those people, if we eliminate their positions here, we can move them there. So, there is a seat when the music stops for those folks. We only have 11 high school retirements and 10 junior high retirements. We're looking at reducing nine right now. We know that their certifications are unlikely to line up, at least with the family consumer science piece. So, if we get to the point where we're looking at 18, then we'll wind up definitely having those issues of reductions in force and most likely in core content areas. Because we'll be able to increase class sizes in core content areas to hire back people with specialized certifications. And I don't know, Lori, I want to be clear. I don't know that we're asking to get rid of all of these Title I positions.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just one person, you know, I'm a seven, so.
We brought it from eight to 6.7. I think the work, because. Six-three? Okay, well, it's updated from there. But, so, the more, you know, you guys are doing the work to see where you can dovetail. Keep doing that, see how those retirements come in. And see where we can absorb some of these title cuts. Keep them away from the high, from our low RAM tier schools. And do whatever we can to, you know, I don't, I wouldn't like to see this nine go up. I mean, I don't want to see it go up. But if it goes up one or two, certainly it should, like, I can't, I couldn't in good conscience say, oh, yeah, let's just take seven more secondary teachers out. I just know that, you know, we do need to focus on those elementary kids, but we can't leave everybody else out to dry. So, find that.
So, fix it already and keep everyone.
Lori, it's, it's me in the middle.
Rena, I ask for the last one, and I ran out of time today. I was going to backload all of the previous copies of the document that you've seen. And, you know, one of the things I'd remind you, and I know that we've talked about it at length with our administrative team, and I've talked about it with Brady at one of our every other week leadership meetings with the ICEA. And when we started this process, I had 25 elementary teachers and 25 secondary teachers. We had 50 teachers on. So, right now, we have 30. So, I'm, although I said this earlier today, and Craig said, well, you don't really feel that. I said, I feel good about it. He said, you really feel good about it? And I said, I don't feel good about it in that way, but I feel good about it from where it was to where it is today. So, I may not have magic, Lori, but I still have two weeks.
Yeah, hey, you made a lot of progress. I do really want to reiterate that, that this top number, I made a specific ask on that, and you delivered, and I really appreciate that.
So, we're getting there, it's getting better. I think by the time we get back to you next time, I can almost guarantee that the Title I number is going to look better. I will try to do it with as little impact at the secondary level as I can.
That sounds good.
Cool.
The junior high dean of students, that will remain vacant, where?
That's Jeff Wick's position.
Okay.
Yeah.
All the athletic responsibilities are moving to the junior high administrative teams. They'll absorb that at Southeast and Northwest. And then that's where Steve had shared that Colby would assume that role at North Central for the time being.
Can the school ADs take it up?
Yes.
No.
They can't?
No. It's just impossible with logistics, with timing of events, the days that they're going. Yeah, I don't think so.
From an event supervision standpoint, they usually happen at the same point in time, so we're better off having.
They can't make them all the events anyway, correct?
No. They make none of the junior high events.
Well, but I mean, a high school AD doesn't make all the events.
No, I understand that, but I said that if you had them do both, they wouldn't make any of the junior high events.
They're always at a high school.
They're always at a high school event when a junior high event takes place. So, I mean, we did a, we didn't just decide this haphazardly. We looked at it and said, given the makeup of the principal, assistant principal, dean, leadership team that we have in place at each of the junior highs, when we went to them and asked them, if this is a displacement that we're planning on doing, can you absorb this? They all said yes. Could be a little different take on it, got to dean's.
And this one hasn't necessarily been a short-sighted deal for us either. We knew Jeff was approaching retirement. As we added deans, we had been having those conversations with the junior high team, but this is eventually something they would take on and, you know? So, I think they're ready to do that.
I, I, I was kind of keeping on the forefront that we are a K-12 educational institution. And I think education is top and paramount. And I think that our building staff, well, I'd like to say, I've had some concerns on just the amount of money we're putting in there and their priorities.
So, where are we next step?
Well, I was going to ask, I mean, I listened to our discussion, but I don't really know what we told them to look at.
We created some prioritization around Title I, is what I'm hearing. And we want to see if there's any more flexibility there. We also are not saying we want to add nine to the secondary level cutting process. And so, we're trying to seek a balance. Are there some decisions we can make tonight, though? Additional decisions that can help guide some of that next wave of work? I mean, I just have to ask the question again. I'm a little concerned that these numbers don't account for the FTE required for the new program for ADD. And is that something that we want to say we have to heed or not? I mean, it's a small number of kids enroll. Again, it's one of our strategic priorities. We're already sacrificing or deferring progress in some of our other strategic priorities. Can we defer this for a year, given the budget cuts and the lifts that we're looking at doing? Can we make that decision tonight so that we can give guidance to the district about how to manage some of the next steps of exploration? And not just ADD, but ethnic studies as a new program too coming on board. I don't know what kind of impact that has from a staffing perspective. But, I mean, these are new things that our students won't be losing from a past experience. They're clearly not activities focused on, hey, my kids are going to read by third grade. I just wanted to beg the question, if we can't decide it tonight, then when will we? Because we need to make a decision on the 26th, because pink slips go out on the 29th. So, we need to have some clarity around this very quickly.
So, here's, here are my thoughts, I didn't think I'd chat about this today. So, I'm a big proponent of ADD, and I really want it to succeed. My worry and two concerns, if we involuntary transfer someone who doesn't want to teach it, that program's going to fail, because that person's heart is not.
Exactly.
This is a program that's going to take, it is going to have low numbers in the beginning, because our community's not used to it. I believe once they start to see what it really is, people will glue in and they'll do it. If it doesn't get off to a robust start, and we're worried it won't get there. If you hire somebody in, and you've had to riff people in those buildings, how is that person going to be received in those buildings? That might not be the most popular person.
They'll be resented, potentially.
So, from a morale standpoint, that, those are my concerns, that if we, that we're, if we just go in because we do it, and it gets off to a rough start. So, I'm worried about that. And again, I think it goes to Sean's point. This is one of those things that we said, we are going to do this, and we're going to make a commitment to it. And just like the librarians, who I think are, you know, top of the list in reading, we say, this is one of the things that's going in place what next year. You know, that we said this is a commitment, we made. Ethnic studies, my guess is ethnic studies, we could probably teach with current staff, because we have social studies teachers. I don't know that we're in that position.
Not for, you'd still FTE, I mean, I'll just say on.
It takes an FTE, right?
Yeah, like, yeah.
But it could replace a number of other classes.
We pared down the number of elective and social studies. It would create, I mean, it's not impossible, but it would create.
Along with your point, I'm sorry. As far as the teaching standpoint, do we have the right teacher?
And me, and correct, absolutely. You're right.
We haven't even, we discussed it as a board, that we were going to look to fill that position early. We didn't do it.
Right, but no, that's what I'm saying. These are things that if we want successful programs, whatever they are, and for them to continue, we have to make sure we're putting the right people and not just forcing folks. I mean, I just know, in my world, when I force someone into a position that they're not passionate for, I don't expect the results I need. If it turns into a word that I probably can't say.
Good point, yeah, no, I, you know, I.
We want both those programs to be successful. If we did not want them to be successful, I completely echo what you said, JP. And that's been a concern, like, for both of these new programs. That if we don't get them started off on the right foot, and if there is some resentment of hiring someone, rifts are happening elsewhere, other programs are being cut. I just, I'm concerned it will be a rocky first start, and we will not see the positive success in year one that we need to be sustainable. And I think it's, my personal opinion is that it's a consistent clear message. We're willing to say, we're taking cuts across many of our strategic initiatives, and we're doing it because we're trying to protect as much of our core programming for our most prioritized students, however we want to say it. And these are the things we're willing to defer for a year, but we prioritize them as still being high strategic priorities, and we'll begin to fill them as soon as we can in the budget list.
We haven't prioritized career and tech education in this district. And I will not stand by, we have served as a poor example to the state. We were talking about programs that didn't come back. Our home building program, which built 39 homes, was done away within its 40th year for savings of $60,000.
And you've looked at.
And, I'm sorry, I, we, we have to, we have to, we have to stand, I feel, and this is me, of course, I've got three years invested in it. And we delayed it a year already. And now we're looking to delay it another year. And at this convention, Claret Kirkamana, who was on our steering committee, and I felt that our discussions with them helped get it started there, with Kevin Kenny as a board member, couldn't get it in his district. They're already up and going. And yes, it's absolutely crucial that we hire a good instructor for this, for this program, for every program. And I have confidence that Chase will find a good instructor. But we keep pushing this stuff back. In all the discussions on the phone, oh, we were going to put in facilities for that. We can do that. It's not in the language, but we can do that. We haven't done it. We don't have automotive in our schools. We don't have metalworking in all of our schools. We don't have woodworking in all of our schools. And that's, that's not a serious commitment. And I'm concerned that you push this off a year. The board members that supported it, three of us, will be up for election in November. Some may run, some may not. And that you'll be in a situation that there's only one board member that will continue through, and you've eliminated it.
Well, hopefully, if this is such a desired program, it would be just board members, the community members, teachers, students, would be advocating for this program to be a critical part of their education. And so, we heard some of that from people outside the district to come in and advocate for this. And we approved it, and we're supporting it. But in this climate of these kinds of significant budget cuts, how can you look someone in the eye for a teacher we haven't hired? How can we look a teacher in the eye that's getting riffed? That's the kind of hard conversation I'm having in my head. For a program that, you're a brand-new teacher that has, I'll stop.
Janet, you just touched on your point, and someone Phil said it. It was a four to three vote, but the three of us, if you go back and listen to that debate, was not debating the program itself.
We were debating funding.
Yes. So, I can't speak for those two. But if you go back and listen to everything that I said, I was not debating the merit of the program having itself.
If we were not in a budget crisis, having to lay off valued employees, I would be four, full 150% in favor of getting this new teacher on board. It's the climate that we're in of having to lay off valued trusted employees that's giving me heartburn on this one. It's really giving me a hard time. And same for ethnic sense, if we had to shift things around, and I was supportive of that initiative as well. I feel like it's back to retention, back to making sure we're a safe environment for our teachers to come and stay and feel valued. These kinds of decisions are going to be hard for our teaching staff to accept and understand and feel supported by.
Just want to add one thing on that debate. When we had that vote on ADD, to Sean's point tonight, I think if you go back and listen to what I said, I did say, I wish we would have the discussion where we would go back and prioritize the things that we took away from the last cut, with stuff that we want to add. That was my point on that night.
So, just, I'm clear, and, you know, asking what next steps or what decisions happen. I mean, we're talking about a certified budget, not necessarily the operational budget. So, we're kind of looking at big chunks, right? So, the number there at the secondary level, that nine, or 10, or 12, or 18, or whatever it ends up being, is not necessarily positions, but it's important to know ahead of time because of certifications of those teachers and what they can and can't do.
Good observation. Craig brings you the certified budget, and then I'll give you the recommendation on that. The certified budget, the key component of our certified budget is setting our max levy for next year. So, he builds a budget that says, given the state parameters, this is the most money that we can spend next year. That's what we have to approve on April 9. What we need from you between now and the 26th, and then a vote on the 26th, is that these reductions that we've proposed meet your expectations because they will then drive the decisions that we make for staffing in terms of whether or not we have to reduce in force. Because if we get through the next meeting, and you just all of a sudden say, you know what, I hate secondary cuts, I wish you didn't do that, and we had already riffed nine or 10 people, they'd already been riffed. Or if we come back and you say, you know what, I really wish that you would have had 18 on that secondary number, and you tell us that in the middle of April, well, now we missed the riff date. So, now all we can do is hope that we have enough resignations to meet your goal. So, that's the difference. What this budget does is it helps us make sure that we have the right players on the team, enough wide receivers, enough defenders, enough quarterbacks, whatever it is, to run this offense. And so, when we look at this, we say, this is what we see as our staffing lineup, recognizing that some of this is achieved through attrition, which we already know, and some of it will be achieved through riff, which we will do. And that's what we need to know by the time we get to next week.
Do you feel like you've got enough guidance from?
I think I do. I think that the last one, I guess, it's not a motion or anything that you make here at the board table, but from an affirmation or a consensus standpoint, we're going to be looking really closely at low enrolled courses next year. Our ADD courses are low enrolled right now. What you see are raw enrollment numbers, we haven't gone through conflict resolution on there. We talked to our high school staff, they'll tell you that a class. We talked to our high school staff, they'll tell you that a class of twenty, really when you get to August twenty-fourth is class fourteen, when you go through there, because when they try to line up all those singletons, they usually lose anywhere between twenty-five and thirty percent of the people that are enrolled in them. So they struggle with classes that today have twenty or fewer kids in them. And so that's a big part of the debate that they go through. So it's in a low enrollment area. So if it's a priority and you want us to do it, we can run a class with low enrollment. We've done that in the past, it's how we start programs. If that's not what you want us to do, we need to know that too, because that'll be part of our staffing process.
Are there any other classes that are low enrollment?
Matt sent a list to you today that includes all the sections that we were able to pull from today's enrollment that show every class that has been run under thirty, I don't know, under twenty-
We did twenty and under.
Twenty and under.
Twenty and under for course requests. And so those would be ones generally the last few years we haven't been running or running on every other year basis anyways. Some of them get left, because, you know, to fill out your teacher schedule, we may have an opportunity to run a class that's under the class size threshold by two, so.
So essentially what we do every year is we run those course requests, we draw a line through it and say, well, here, we're not running stuff. And then we may run some of those classes that are on that chart. If you've got a point eight teacher, he's got a one point oh appointment, we'll put them in there. So those are classes that don't run. Or you might see like Spanish four and five, we might run together in one classroom, so we get a critical mass to do it.
Yeah, that'd be the thing when you do see that sheet, if you have any questions too, because that's a good example. Like you'll see AP Spanish four, AP Spanish five, look like they have seven or eight kids. Well, that's, the class that's housed together. So some of those things are taught in the same room at the same time, so.
So-
But I think Amy and I, just for our understanding, the guidance you guys were given there, to clarify what Steve was saying is, try to reduce the Title One cut as, as we can, paying attention to those buildings and seeing what we can do to, you know, cover that somewhere else in the budget, is that?
And they not necessarily zero it out, but drill that out.
But see how low we can get, right? Okay.
The, so on the twenty-sixth, are we voting?
You're giving us direction, so you, you essentially are telling me what to do. That's why one of the things I keep-
So when you come back on the twenty-sixth, I mean, it's a present, it's a discussion or presentation, but are we actually-
It is, we'll be back here and I'm, again, I will continue to ask, are there hard stops on here? Because this is what we are doing. So next year, we are planning to reduce twenty-one elementary teachers. We are planning to reduce nine secondary ed teachers. We are planning to reduce three librarians.
Because from that meeting, you will go out and if there's rifts needed, you will riff people.
Right.
Yeah, that is sad. Yeah, staffing, said, from a teaching perspective, there's a lot of communication that takes place. And so knowing with a lot more certainty what the plan is and how it could be absorbed through attrition, be it retirements or late retirements or resignations and late resignations, or rifts, is really important. Because people are starting to make decisions and we want to keep people.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's our priority. And, you know, the more uncertainty there is, the more newer teachers we've invested in might think, you know what, there's just too uncertain, there's too uncertain for me, I'm out of here, man. They got a good gig over there, so your ass is going to clean? I'm going to just take it.
And just so you know, and it's unfortunate, but it's just part of the dynamic right now. Brady and I talked about this today. So Davenport just ripped seventy-five teachers. And, and our young teachers know that. And it, they have said, they told us, they told Brady, they told me, that if there's uncertainty, they're going to go out and find a certain position for next year. Because if they wait, they may be in line behind the Davenport teachers that are all looking at it today.
Yeah, I, I think, or you made great progress. I think we're really close, it sucks, but I think, I think it's close, I don't know-
We're getting there, we're getting there.
And it'll, and it should look better next, in two weeks.
Okay, are we done on this for tonight? Closing remarks?
We'll be back in two weeks.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
The table is-
Oh, sorry.
It's still here.
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. I'm so tired.
Craig, Craig.
There is a motion on the floor.
To adjourn, sorry.
I asked for the pearl to be on it and I would be okay with taking it off.
Well, Craig's been here all night, waiting patiently.
Craig just gave you the thumbs up. We can do it later.
Craig has buried you.
He's the one making this call, but he doesn't like to say it.
Craig's only got about me and him before he's done, so he can sit down and enjoy it all.
And he's like, oh wow, jeez. Can this be, can this pearl, well-
What's going on with the twenty-sixth session?
Okay, so then-
I have more than ten minutes worth of discussion.
Okay, then I-
Shall I put it at the beginning?
Yeah, I moved, I moved, adjourned it.
Second, second.
On favor, I-
Just so you all know, the, the back doors, 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 the-